Basically, I don't know if there's even an agenda item back there today. But agenda is short for this particular meeting. Just encourage you to quiet your cell phones. And we'll start with a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Roskin.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Roskin. Review and approve the agenda. Is there any public comments on the agenda? Now to take a motion.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number five. I'll call on Mike and Kevin.
Good morning. Mike Cool, Director of Pendleton County Buildings and Grounds. Kevin Burton is our Senior Project Manager. As you're aware, Buildings and Grounds has been working with, in all departments, in fact, in regard to have been working on a facilities, needs assessment, and facilities master plan update for the county. We're working with BKV Group. They're the ones who completed the original facilities master plan for Pendleton County in 2010. At your last meeting, they presented their findings at this point for the project. And one of the recommendations was relocating some functions due to lack of available properties around our downtown campus, relocating some facilities off-site. That includes, as an idea, relocating our governmental administrative functions off-site. As part of the process and through suggestion from the building committee, Kevin and I have gone out and looked at potential options for facilities to relocate these facilities. Concerns have been along the lines, we thought that there's great potential and the opportunity to buy an existing building relative to current construction costs, and that the county may be able to save some money. As I said, with encouragement from the building committee, we went out and looked at properties. 900 Concourse Drive was one of these properties that we looked at, which was a former call center. We've looked at it several times, had the opportunity to walk department heads through it, as well as some of the commissioners. Thank you for your time. What we've, it seems like a very suitable building, a great deal of additional benefits to this one, including all the FFNE comes with the facility. 2017, there was approximately $3 million invested into the building to update all the mechanical systems, a lot of the finishes. And then, once it was, that work was complete, it was only occupied for approximately a year and a half. And so, through some discussion that we have built a rivalry, what we thought would be an acceptable offer or potential price, and through some discussion with them, which we are presenting that to the board for consideration. The building is, maybe, you want to give some details of the building?
Sure. The building is a pretty open structure as a call center. It does have some built-in offices. The west side of the building was completely renovated in that 2017 time period, all new systems, furniture, finishes, lighting, ceiling grid. It's got a new roof, new HVAC equipment, and all in 2017, 2018. It's got the square footage that we need to meet our 20-year growth with all the administrative offices that we're moving out there. Had thought about moving out there. It's got a lot of parking. It's got fairly accessible access from Elk Vale or Highway 44. So it's a pretty good location for people to be able to find and come to. It's got a lot of natural light, as you can tell by the picture. It's got a lot of glass all the way around it. It lets a lot of natural light into the building, and a lot of view outside. Does have some amenities for employees. As you can see in the picture, it's got a full gym, all brand-new in 2018. It's got a kitchen. It does have a large cafeteria break room as well for staff. So, going through the pictures, the upper left, of course, is the gym. Second picture next to it is a yoga room right off the gym. You've got a cafeteria, it's got eight microwaves, three commercial fridges. That's where staff can warm and eat their own meals that they've brought, their seating in the cafeteria, then the lower are the restaurant. There's not a lot of restaurant facilities around the building, so it would be kind of nice if we could find somebody that would actually lease that restaurant and be able to feed our employees and surrounding businesses. It could have an outside access, so that they wouldn't be coming into our, the secure part of our building. The building lays itself out fairly well to be able to create a nice, secure entry. You can see by the floor plan where the arched piece is in the center, right there. That is a secure entry. You come in and you have to have access allowed to go into either door. So, how we arrange the offices in there is yet to be determined.
We have done, BKV as well as Kevin, have done some kind of proof-of-concept ideas of how we might fit offices in the building. They are proving that it is a, looks like a credible way to handle the offices that we need to relocate, so as an added benefit there. So, we'll have to go in and do the design work if you approve this purchase as well, which we'll get going on immediately after a decision is made.
A few other comments about the building. It would require some walls for division of the differing departments that are going into the building. Depending on where the walls go, depends on how much relocation of HVAC zones, heating, cooling zoning, fire sprinklers, lighting, that kind of stuff. It's fairly low-cost items, because it's all present. It just needs to be situated to meet current code. If we build a wall too close to a sprinkler head, the sprinkler head has to be moved out so that it sprinkles the right area. Zoning for heating, it's in a big, open area now, so that the way the zones work are just sections, and so we'd have to reallocate certain units to certain spaces. But it's really, all the equipment's there, the duct work is there. It's a fairly low-cost item to have to do that, rather than building all new.
As Kevin points out, with the numbers of units on the roof, it does create quite a bit of zonal control that when we need to subdivide spaces up, creates those opportunities to utilize the existing equipment pretty effectively, I think, so.
The technology that's inside the building currently would fit our needs also?
I would have to let IT speak to that, for sure. It does have, it was a call center, so it's got incredible amount of data-heavy items in there. There's lots of cabling. Some of the cabling is CAT 5E, which is a little bit outdated as compared to CAT 6, but 5E's a lot better than 5. So it should handle all of the needs that we have. There's plenty of racks for holding the equipment. There's Wi-Fi spots, there's repeaters. So all of those tech items that are there. It's got a whole UPS bank, and it's got a backup generator on the building, so there's no chance of us, you know, there's always a chance, but there's not a real likelihood of us ever losing our data from our servers or any of that with the large UPS backup and the generator. So you got two types of backup for a data system.
Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
So, looking at this building, and, you know, I know the building committee looked out at existing buildings, because the cost to building new right now is so much more expensive in finding materials and so forth. If you had to build something like this, Kevin, what would you guess?
Fairly open structure like that, without a lot of walls, taking out the FFNE and all of that, you know, the price per square foot for a building currently ranges anywhere from $350 to $4 and 1/4, $425 a square foot. They just did a fire station for like $600 a square foot. The Lawrence County jail was $565 a square foot. Office buildings are, of course, less.
Yep.
But the price that we felt was acceptable for everybody was $92 a square foot on this building, and it includes all of the FFNE and all of the electronics, all the weight equipment, everything that's in there comes with it.
That's, you know, that's, I have things for touring it yesterday, but that was one of the things I noticed, is with all the furniture and the equipment that's in there, I think, you know, I couldn't guess how much that stuff is, but some of those petitions are very, very nice, work perfect for what we need, I think.
What did we just spend on six workstations for?
$40,000.
And six workstations?
Six workstations. And probably not as ornate, it doesn't have the amenities that these workstations have on the new side.
So do we, there's quite a bit in there, so we'd probably sell some and probably, there'd probably be room there to maybe store some for future use?
We have not had a lot of discussion on there. I think that we have the same ideas, is that, yes, we're probably, we're not going to need all of that equipment. So, of course, we'd want to try and make use of the newer stuff first, and we probably will have to do some reconfigurations to help meet unique needs of the company versus what the call center, how the call center used them. So, there's some of that, that will take probably some systems apart and recombine them in other ways.
Yeah. I was just looking at, when you're looking at changing two different areas, there's enough there that can come over here to fit the needs that we need here also, so, I mean, as you're think, going through some of that stuff, that would be my thoughts.
As we start laying out the differing departments and what classification of position would normally be in a cubicle, and then seeing how we could reconfigure, call stations have smaller work areas, because all they have to worry about is a computer and a telephone. Our staff have some file cabinets and some other workspace needs, so we'd have to enlarge those cubicles to some degree. So taking account of what we have and how they lay out would give us a really good projection. By far, there's a lot more systems furniture in there than I would anticipate us needing. Some of the older stuff could actually be refurbished to match or be very similar to what is new, if the newer stuff doesn't fulfill all of our needs, it'd be a lot less than buying new.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Another thing I'd like to point out, being on the building committee, was that we looked at the various options, and some of the options would have been to increase the size of this facility. By doing that, you're going to need more parking, more parking that's going to, you're going to need a parking ramp, and then you got that expense. So the one thing I see positive with this would be that we're going to have plenty of parking, because even today, when I parked up above, it was getting pretty tight, so that's just another, I guess, an asset relative to this particular property.
It does, you know, as one of our growing concerns is that, at some point, what's happening on this campus is generating more parking need, and this does help, even with that relocating these functions off-site in a location that can suit, can meet all the parking needs for that facility, so.
Our original intent was to try to keep all county business centralized on this downtown campus in some way, shape, or form, but every time, as you mentioned, Commissioner, every time you do one thing, it creates another domino effect where everything just keeps falling. And if you keep taking up parking to build buildings, then what do you do with parking when that were already 400 and some spaces short of today by the program? So, that just, we kept researching all these different options, and the cost of adding on down here, the loss of parking, all of those kind of things started driving us towards looking at some of these outside properties. And this seems like it's a lot better bang for the buck than trying to develop this, even though there are those long-term items of, you know, split campuses, deferred maintenance department, you know, split maintenance departments, additional equipment needed for two different sites, those kind of things will still add to some cost, but I think that those still are a lot cheaper than us being able to do anything down on this campus to make this a single unit.
This does allow us to begin to move forward with solutions right away, rather than continuing to try and work. And currently, there just aren't places available downtown that can, that meet our needs or help us get to our needs, so that's a challenge in how we do that. We're hopeful that there'll be some opportunities yet, but there currently don't exist those, and so that would require a whole nother process to move forward and start trying to find that, to gain that space. So, this allows us to start addressing needs very quickly.
Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I was on the building committee, and when we first were on the building committee for years, it was, we needed to expand building to ground, and we talked about this yesterday with Kevin and Mike, and Commissioner Laster was there, and then the jail and the infrastructure, and basically the jail expansion. And then we also had visited that, it would cost about $28 million for the jail expansion, and we could make that jail bigger to a certain extent, but it really wouldn't make it big enough for the future needs of the jail, so we needed to do somewhat of an off-site jail in order to make that happen. Plus, what would happen when we tried to do the jail with inmates, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be feasible? So, that was the first part that we needed to address. And then Commissioner Roskin and Commissioner LaCroy became people on the, the new commissioners on the building committee, and they went further, which is good. They went further and did a needs assessment of the whole county, not just Buildings and Grounds, and not just in a particular area, which I liked. So, for the expansion and the future needs, they started looking at what we needed for this building and the whole needs of Pendleton County, which I appreciated. And then, this building came about, which, for the price, is a good price at this point, and plus with bonding and everything else, it made sense. For me, my issues were, of course, and Kevin and Mike already know, were budget concerns for, you already know how much it's going to cost to put people in these buildings, the maintenance and future needs. And so, some of that is, you know, we have buildings to sell. We also are partnering with the city on some of this for our public safety. So some of those concerns are meant through getting extra cash flow through forethought of what we can do besides just bond or just use, basically, the $10 million that we had from, I forgot what we called that.
ARPA.
ARPA funds. So, a creative way to expand Pendleton County for its needs for the future, but still think about those budget concerns and the cash flow needs. So I appreciated all of the forethought put into this expansion from the building committee, from Mike and from Kevin. So, at this point, I think it's a good move. Again, I'll be looking at budget concerns and stuff, but you can only do so much to run those numbers to a certain extent, but we also, again, are looking at other creative ways where that cash flow is coming from, from not just one source. We're looking for future needs where Buildings and Grounds has to move to a bigger spot, that the jail is looking to expand, and there's other needs and other ways for cash flow through jail needs. It's a win-win situation for Pendleton County. It's a win-win for the taxpayers of Pendleton County to get their needs fit for the future, and still, like we said before, having a building that is not just going to be a five-year fix, and then come back later and tell the taxpayers, we need another 13 million to fix it and make a bigger building. So, again, I think we're looking out for the future, the Buildings and Ground, or not Buildings and Grounds, the building committee did a really good job of looking at the assets and the things we have for the future and what we can do next. So, thank you for everybody in the building committee, and that was our, a lot of our sheriff, two commissioners, and Janet, and some other people from our building committee that got this done. So, future needs, and then having a company do it and do it right, and run those numbers so the community could see that this wasn't just something that, okay, they just want a brand-new building. They actually had a forethought about the future and what was going to happen for us, and what were the needs of our community for the future that was going to be 10 to 20 years down the line. So, I think that's pretty awesome. I think it took a lot of work. It wasn't a one-year thing. It was a three-to-five-year thing. So, thank you for your forethought. Thank you for all your work, because this wasn't something that just came about in a couple of days, a couple of months. This was years of forethought, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I'll point out, some of the options that we were presented were well in excess of $100 million. So, this decision wasn't that hard when you sit there and look at the options that was presented, just wanted to point that out.
Before I take a motion, I do have a speaker request from Mike Mueller. Mike, would you like to come up?
Morning, and thank you, commissioners. Mike Mueller, as I mentioned last week, I'm a limited government guy, so seeing government grow, always stretches that taxpayer a little bit. I think we talked last time about debating how many jobs can be done from home, be it clerical or some other means. Mr. Burton and Mr. Cool have done an extensive work, my background's construction and facilities management, so I may have some questions that they've already covered outside of this meeting. 2% M&R on the building value. So, the building value by the Realtor was $200 a square foot if it was built today. These gentlemen said $350 to $450 a square foot. So, depending on what that means, if it's $200 a square foot and it's a $14 million building, that's $280,000 M&R. If it's $350 to $450, now you're pushing $400,000 M&R. You've got costs that may have been divulged of support services for deliveries, maintenance, equipment, et cetera, that they were mentioning before. Five-year-old HVAC systems, better than a 25-year-old HVAC system, but is there any warranty left on it? Typically, five years of the outside on warranty for compressors and things of that nature. If they haven't been occupied for the last three, three-and-a-half years, have those systems been jogged? Have they been maintained? Have they been claiming any warranty issues? I'm not sure how the roof is, but 15 to 20 years typically is a roof warranty, so.
Mike, let me just stop you there, because I don't know if you're aware of this. A lot of the building hasn't been open during that period of time, but there has been people that are working out of there. There's officers that are operating out of there.
Okay.
So the facility itself has been operating during that.
Okay. So, I guess I was under the impression of being occupied, so that's a good idea, or piece of information. So, if we were to build a new building, as you say, $350, $450 a square foot, if that's the true cost, that would be a considerable expense. So, as we look at separating departments, they mentioned some walls that need to be built, systems may have to be subdivided, fire sprinkler, et cetera, HVAC systems, subzoned, et cetera. Has there been a budget assigned for the design fees for that, the estimated cost for that? The master plan had some estimated cost for renovation-type things. Has that been budgeted for in addition to the $7 million to make the purchase and the $500,000 escrow for earnest money? So, I just wanted to raise some questions to those points of what was going on here. You also will lose $111,000 in tax revenue, since it's a private entity going to a public building, so that's another consideration for you to think about where that's made up, but thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So, Mike, this also includes the underlying site, which is Zone Light Industrial, located in Rushmore Regional Industrial Park, where sites are typically sold for $3 a square foot. So if you take eight acres, $3 a square foot, if you were to do that, that's over a million dollars. So that's included with this purchase, along with enough asphalt paving and infrastructure to accommodate roughly 500-plus parking spots. So, that's another thing that we took into consideration.
Understand, there are always benefits to things like this, but there are also costs that you have to be aware of, so that's all I wanted to point out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Anything further, Mike and Kevin? Anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? Any further questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd offer the motion to move to approve the purchase of Pendleton County of the real property located at the 900 Concourse Drive, Rapid City, South Dakota, legally described as Lot 1, Block 1 of Rushmore Business Park in the city of Rapid City, Pendleton County, South Dakota. As shown on the plat filed, the plat book 29, page 109, in the amount of $6,969,092, and to authorize Pendleton County Auditor to issue an earnest money payment of $500,000 to the escrow agent, the title company, for the terms of the purchase and sale agreement, and issue final payment to the title company less the earnest money, plus any additional fees and costs due at the time of closing. The Commissioner Chair, Vice Chair, Auditor, and Legal Counsel for the county are authorized to sign as applicable any and all required documents necessary to complete the purchase.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second for the discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laster, one second, Kevin.
Thank you. I'm going to be supportive of this. We looked a lot of different properties. Some of them were more expensive, with a lot more work. I think Kevin and Mike, for all the work that they did to make sure we got out the fee, allowed us to ask the questions that we felt were appropriate, whether it was issues or problems with each of the properties, so that we had an idea of what we're getting into. Everyone here knows that I really am adamant about watching how much we spend, and really not too excited about buying a new building. I'm not really excited about buying any kind of building, but I do understand the necessity of it. And I think, you know, if we would have gone with some of the other ones without having a thorough look-through, we could have gotten ourselves into a higher cost, either purchasing and repairs or maintenance, and I think you did your due diligence to make sure that we got a good deal on a good piece of property that's going to last the county what we need. I know a lot of people don't know all the details and all the conversations that were had about how much space is needed and what it's going to look like, but I feel comfortable with this particular project moving forward, so I just wanted to give that input.
Kevin?
I just think it was important to have on the record what our final price is. So, the purchase price for the building is $6,969,092. I just thought that should be in the record.
And it's in the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Take a motion for executive session.
To go on the executive session.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second.
Mr. Chairman, can I get clarification of, um, or can we have that motion adjusted to, for adding pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, subsection 1, just for clarification?
For personnel issues.
Yep. For personnel issues.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Call us back into regular session. Is there a motion?
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Got a, I've got a motion and a second to come out of executive session, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. So, following discussion on moving forward with, um, hiring a new director for human resources, um, I'll read the motion, but somebody else can make the motion, uh, move to work with Alternative HR LLC of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, to provide consulting services in order to fill the human resources director position in Pennington County.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Move to adjourn.
I've got a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, thank you.